Good afternoon, everybody, members of the public. And thank you for coming along today. We are moving straight on to Agenda Item 11, which is land to the south of Dell Cottage, Winchester Road, Shedfield, erection of an open-fronted agricultural haul-stroke-straw-hay-stroke-straw storage building and its part retrospective. The case number is 20/01329/FUL. And the case officer is Nicola Clayton. Afternoon Nicola. When you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. So this application is an application for land south of Dell Cottage on Winchester Road, Shedfield. I'd just like to give a verbal update before I start the presentation, that it is considered an additional condition should be proposed in relation to the building to be solely used for agricultural purposes on agricultural land. If I may start the presentation, thank you. The proposal site is an area of land south to the residential cottage of Dell Cottage with access off the B2177. The site shares a lane with a dwelling and the mixed use of the land north of the site for chapels of Suttonton Limited that operates as a heavy goods operation centre. The proposal is for the regularisation of groundworks and the erection of an open-fronted agricultural hay storage building, which the works have now completed. On these drawings here, it outlines the site in red on both drawings. It's just that the one of the drawings is a slightly zoomed-in location plan, showing the belt of trees surrounding the site. Here we have the elevations and the floor plans for the agricultural building in Sitche. It's got agricultural appearance. And here it shows the surrounding belt of trees and hedgerows. Here's some site photographs from within the site near Dell Cottage. It shows the building is already in use for storage of hay. And here is existing access onto Winchester Road. The access shown here has the required visibility displays by the engineer and these have been conditioned to be retained. Thank you.
Thank you very much Nicola. Just wait for the hum to go. Members of the public now, public speaking. We have first of all the parish council representative, Chet of the parish council, presumably councillor David Ogden.
Hello there.
Good afternoon. And you can see, when you start speaking, the clock countdown from three minutes will come on to the screen, which I think you can see, it's there or in front of you. And so when you're ready councillor Ogden.
Chairman, sorry, with your permission councillor Ogden has asked for some photos to be displayed.
All right, yeah, but they affect the clock, don't they Matthew?
They do. Mark would say.
Yes, they do. Well, we can listen.
Is it councillor Ogden's choice whether... Oh, I see, so you can't have the clock and the photos. Okay, lovely, yeah. Could you just twist it just one? I suppose councillor Ogden should be able to see it too.
Yeah.
No doubt someone would shout at me if I'd gone over time.
I will rely on someone to tell me when the three minutes are.
That's very kind.
Okay, right, we're sorted I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you're ready.
Thank you very much indeed. It's very hard to go against case officer's recommendation. First of all, I'd like to refer you to an LDC dated the 2nd of March 2018. Strict conditions were imposed, every one of them has been broken. The first schedule limits eight lorry cabs, no trailers. Secondly, it states that the use of operational matter which is materially different from the described use cannot be conducted. Detailed scrutiny of the LDC revealed this is so. The whole area of the application is covered by the first and second schedule. In late 2019, the same application was before planning, it was refused. Now in 2021, the same cut, the exactly same thing and the case officer is trying to get approval. I note the comment on the first officers, first case officers. It included, "The applicant had a poor history of adhering to planning protocols and we have no confidence in their intention to comply with any on this occasion." Highways officer report, yesterday I spoke to the originator, Mr Johnny Elliott. He stated he never ever visited the site and only used his previous colleague's TN notes, which are not current. These date back to 2017. He had no knowledge that it was an accident hotspot and that a tragic fatal accident occurred a short while ago. Nor accidents that actually entered the site entrance. These have been forwarded to the highways, case officer and the police. One of the main reasons the SBC object is that they're dangerous entrance for HGV and tractors with trailers. None can, none cannot enter or leave a site without overhanging the pavement. They cannot sweep into the entrance in one go. Some had to reverse across the road to get a better angle to enter the property. This is quite like it on their initial report. There's the entrance is covered by trees, they've got TPOs on them. They have been damaged because vehicles keep hitting them. Recently, two serious incidents occurred whereby, had it not been a quick reaction of a member of the public, a fatality may have occurred. This was reported to the police. Please look at the photographs in due course. The barn was refused permission but straight away erected against enforcement notices. In 2018, SBC council received a letter concerned by a concerned resident stating that the activities of this site would cause a fatality. One fatality has recently been incurred and is subject to a commoners hearing. SBC has forwarded all the correspondence to Health and Safety Executive and the corner. I realise it's difficult to remove a barn that's already been constructed. I feel that if you're in agreement, the applicant then should have conditioned that no hay or straw trailers are permitted. The grounds of refusal are quite clear, they are against the LDC. No justification for this development which would be harmful to the character and appearance of the local countryside. It's within the local gap. The barn should only be used for storage of agriculture tractors by those connected with hay and store industry.
Sorry Chair, that is three, three minutes.
Would you like to finish your sentence councillor Ogden?
One, I only got one line, thank you. It says trailers should not be allowed.
Thank you very much. Questions of clarification for councillor Ogden, councillor Robson?
Thank you very much councillor Ogden. And you want trailers, I don't know whether we can condition what sort of vehicles they use, but we can try. But why particularly trailers? Are they, are they the vehicles that have caused the accidents or near accidents?
If you have a look at the photographs, you will see the overhang that no, none of the HGV trailers can get into the premises without literally using the pavement. And you can't see, they have to reverse. The photographs actually show you the bale trailers reversing on the main road to try and get into the premises. I don't know whether my colleague, sorry, we have the photographs available and I can actually give you a commentary on it.
Thank you, I think, I think we saw the photographs.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see the photographs on the screen, I do apologise.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Good afternoon. You said that trees which are covered by TPOs have been damaged in the past?
Yes, I got the tree protection officer of the parish council to look at it this weekend. They have been damaged because there's two equal sides of the entrance. That's why the entrance cannot be extended. It's prevented them in the past. We will be forwarding that information to the Winchester City Council Tree Officer.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
Councillor Bentuck?
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much councillor Ogden. Can you put into the background of this site and why things were refused or what more things have been going on there?
The refusal officer's assessment is detailed here. Bear in mind, this is only literally, I would say, less than 18 months ago. And it lists the requirement, there's no need, no requirement. Obviously, it didn't have the highway report that I'm telling you today when I spoke to Mr Elliott, that it is sadly lacking. He just copied a previous document, which is obviously, he's a busy man. The research was done ages ago, that is all changed now. But there's a whole list of previous retrospective applications and someone been refused in the past.
Can I just come back on that?
Yes.
I know there was a lot of soil movement at one stage and that greatly affected the parish councils, it backed onto their headquarters.
Well, it wasn't soil, it was, it looks like soil, but it was, I would say scalpings, a huge amount of scalpings that were used and they are still present at that same, at that premises a couple of days ago. So obviously the increase of HGVs. There is a workshop in the premises that is used to repair. But clearly, if you have kindly look at the LDC, it clearly states that no trailer should be there. They're only allowed to park cabs at the place and it details the whole of the land. And to put a hay store or barn in possession is against this ruling that has been part of this council and it's only 2018. And straight away, 2019, they put a barn up against a refusal for this. So I hope that, I could go into details in all the applications in the past, but no doubt, I think you're getting a gist of what is going on at the premises. I suggest that this is an agenda item virtually for the parish council every time we have a meeting, because it is dangerous. Thank you.
Any more question, clarification? I've got a question. Councillor Ogden, you showed a slide of, I think it was hay or straw, very large vehicle, was that going in the property? So where is that being stored then, all that hay and straw?
Well, I don't know where it went in the end. That particular occurrence was a tractor that was heading from Bishopswalffam area to Wickham. It attempted to go left into the property, it couldn't get round the corner and it then reversed, nearly ran over a pedestrian. The driver remonstrated with a lady. Had she not been that fit, she would have got run over. And it was a police matter because the tractor driver wasn't very happy. And there's a row of traffic behind it because he's trying to reverse into the premises. The other photograph shows you the opposite direction where the cabs with their low loaders come into the premises and you can see it goes right over the pavement. The driver can't see. And from day one, I was party years ago to this original application when they had a representative called Bob Tutton. I asked him to make sure that all drivers that entered that premises were informed of it, because it is so, so dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I will ask the supporter that question as well, because they probably have an answer to my question. Any further questions of clarification? No, so thank you very much councillor Ogden. So we move on to the agent, Paul Harris. Good afternoon, Mr Harris.
Yes, so you have, when you're ready, sorry, I just lost a lot of it now. When, when you're ready, you have three minutes. Okay, thank you, thank you Chair. Despite receiving Nicola Clayton's approval recommendation, I still thought it prudent to speak on behalf of the applicant to provide the committee with a brief history of this proposal and to demonstrate how the applicant has cooperated with the council to try and regularise the development in question. Back in September 2019, the exact same planning application was refused by the council with one, only one reason given for its refusal. And that was that the applicant had provided insufficient information to demonstrate that the proposed development was reasonably necessary for the purposes of agriculture. Accordingly, supported by a detailed agricultural justification report, this application was submitted in June 2020. All other elements of the application remained unchanged. Due to the consultation process and despite not raising any objection to the previous application, the county council's highway department requested further details on how the proposal would impact on the local highway network. To provide this information, the applicant employed the services of an independent highway consultant who, to the ultimate satisfaction of the county highways department, prepared a detailed report that clearly demonstrated that the proposal would not compromise highway safety. Notwithstanding this report however, it should be noted that by virtue of part of the subject property still having an existing agricultural use, the applicant could lawfully enter and exit the property for agricultural purposes with any agricultural vehicles without any restriction as to vehicle size or intensity. In respect of the other planning considerations, the applicant has demonstrated and the planning officer has concluded that the size and scale of the storage building is necessary to support the applicant's declared agricultural activity. The external materials of the building are agricultural in appearance and policy compliant. The building is well concealed and causes no visual or landscape harm to the surrounding area. And also, the building will not result in any loss of residential amenity. To conclude, there appear to be no valid planning grounds for this proposal to be refused and we would therefore ask the committee to concur with the planning officer's assessment and approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of clarification for Mr Harris? Councillor Reed?
Thank you. Mr Harris, you heard the comment made by the parish council with regard to the damage to tree preservation of the trees. What would you like to react to that?
I'm not aware, my client hasn't been notified of any damage to TPO protected trees.
Councillor Robson? Thank you. It appears from the photographic evidence that we've been shown that vehicles that are too large for the existing access are being used. Is this the case? Or are they just being driven badly? Or what is the problem? Because vehicles shouldn't be going up onto the pavement or having to reverse in order to access this facility. So can you explain what the problem is?
No, I can't explain what the problem is. We're in the hands of the highway, county highways officer who's accepted our, our client's consultant's report, who says it's a safe access. And they've conferred with that and just, sorry, just as a reminder, that previous application that was submitted, there was absolutely no objection by the county highways department on the original application.
Any further questions of clarification? Councillor Bentuck?
When I visited the site last week, I could see no hay or straw being stored. Yet that is the contention, that it's for hay and straw storage. All I saw were lots of agricultural vehicles and same as in the pictures shown by case officer. So is it for hay storage?
It is absolutely, but that hay and straw hasn't yet been cut for the season.
I've seen plenty of hay around.
Well, not by my client.
Could I ask on that note? Because I've also witnessed too that there's no hay or straw being stored in that building, just agricultural machinery. The photograph that the parish council showed, that was a very large trailer and it was accessing the site. Where would that hay and straw be stored? Or is it in the building which is retrospectively applied for today?
So the bit, because it's retrospective, the building's been up for some time or the majority of it, it's not all completely up, just so everyone's aware. There was straw and hay in there from last season. That's all now been sold in readiness for this season's hay and straw crop to come in and be stored. I'm not sure what recent movements they have been, but it's.
Because that was a lot of hay and straw going in?
Yes.
Would have been stored in that building? How long is that building?
Not all of it, there's still some, that building is insufficient to store all of my client's straw and hay. He has, he has, in the absence of any other buildings available to him, he has to store it in ricks in fields which are covered. And this was part of the reason for the requirement for this building because a rick of hay was set light last year, which was in the field. So he's trying to reduce that risk.
Could I ask, Mr Harris, I can ask the case officer later, but is this the same application as the one that was refused in 2019?
Exactly, exactly the same, other than the agricultural justification report, which I was employed to provide a bit more expertise on prior to that, well sorry, on top of the original application.
And you now rent land in Waltham Chase?
Yes.
And Titchfield?
Yes.
And is there no possibility of storing the graying or the, whatever it is that this building is for on those sites?
Well, there's no, there's no buildings available to my client on those rented properties and he doesn't want to invest money in putting a building up on someone else's land.
Right. And Titchfield is at a distance of four, five miles?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah. I think I might have had another question, but just check quickly. No, no I haven't. Any other questions of clarification? No, thank you very much, Mr Harris, for coming along.
Thank you.
And Nicola, anything you want to update us on from what you've heard?
I think the only thing I'd just like to update on is there has been an extensive, planning history on this site. But it is important to look at the red edge of this planning application. And this application is purely to do with the agricultural barn, where there was refusals and enforcement history relating to another barn on the site which was dealt with under other planning applications.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. So let's members look at the planning considerations. So the first one is the principle of development, which starts on page 113 and goes on to 114. Design and layout. Then the impact on the character of the area and the neighbouring property. Could I just ask Nicola, there is a house, isn't there, at this Dell Cottage? Is that all within the applicant's ownership?
Yes, it is edged in blue on the plans, I believe that's the applicant's ownership.
But presumably the, the traffic which is offloading doesn't go down as far as Dell Cottage?
No.
And then anything else? Highways and parking? Councillor Robson, then councillor Bentuck?
Thank you Chair. We read that the Highway Authority have no objections. But they also talk about no, a review of the accident statistics over the last five years revealed that two slight severity accidents occurred. And the parish council was talking about a fatality. So that seems to be quite a huge difference in, in, in experience of this, this access and the junction and the road and the accident record. Do we have, do we have any comment to make on that? And given, given that the highways authority has no objection, does that mean that we have, there is no planning consideration that we can use in terms of highways and access that we as a planning committee could use to object to this application? If the highways authority have told us that it's okay? So that's a two-part question.
Okay firstly, it's my understanding that the fatality actually occurred within the site, not this particular site, but within land relating to the mixed use development. So I don't, it's my understanding that it's not to do with the access?
Councillor Reed?
Sorry, the second half of the question about highways?
So the application was first assessed in the initial application which was refused and no objection was raised. They further requested highway statements and it was felt that there is no objection to the planning application and because we gain our advice from the highways, it was my, it's our understanding that there is no objection to be raised.
Chair, I think I've got to answer the question for the councillor. Hancher County Council are the statutory highway authority and therefore, you know, we must take their professional advice in reaching decisions on highway safety matters. They've raised no objection subject to the condition which is added to your papers. And I think it would be difficult to substantiate a reason for refusal. Your officers wouldn't be able to defend it, we're not highway experts. We'd have to call on the highway authority and they would say, we didn't object, we won't assist you in this chair. So I think it's a bit tricky Chair, would be my professional advice.
Mrs Phillips, there's not an extra highway condition, is there?
I think condition two talks about the site lines, doesn't it Chair? That's, that was the request of the highway authority. Yeah, condition two talks about site lines of two before by 160 and two by four and 120 onto Winchester Road to be retained.
But there's not an extra one?
No, there's not Chair, no, it was just that one that was added at their request.
Okay, I see, okay. Councillor Bentuck and then councillor Reed?
Thank you very much. I have to question statistics in this paper about the accidents because I personally know of the number of accidents that take place at the church road, upper church road crossroads. We have been pestering highways for, over the last, ever since I've been a councillor, about accidents at this, this spot. And the officer there has tried to put in some improvements. It is, the accidents are caused by a dip in the road making it difficult sometimes for people trying to turn out of church road or upper church road. And so there are a large number of accidents there. And to say there have just been two slight accidents is way down. So I don't know quite, if they don't coordinate within the different, the different departments of the highways, but they clearly need to get a little bit more coordination between them so they know what's going on. Where one officer's been there to try to help things out and yet that's, this is the report that comes through, I'm really surprised. But probably not really a question on that.
As I say Chair, I don't think I can answer that. It's obviously the highway authority, they are the statutory consultees that said that we can only take their professional advice Chair, at this committee and have regard to that in decision-making.
I've just given my opinion from the ears, thank you.
If I go on, because I've just addressed this hum and it's been indicated to me that my microphone causing it, it's not. Because if I turn my microphone off, the noise comes out the speaker anyway. And then the hum carried on.
I think it's when two or three mics are on at the same time Chair, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Suggestions to us then how to stop this hum?
I think if we can try and just have one microphone on at a time, that, that might help.
Yeah, there was only one microphone on in the last.
I think yours and councillor Bentuck's are on. Right.
That's your question, isn't it?
So that isn't the reason, I don't think. Right, councillor Reed, followed by councillor Pearson?
Chairman, in some respects, my question was exactly the same as councillor Bentuck's and to some degree the same as councillor Robson's about this particular site. So I've got something to say, it'll be in debate.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you Chair. I'm looking at the operating licence that operate from here. I noticed Nicola refers to seven HE licence to operate from this site. Do those HE licences permit the haulage of a trailer? First question and the second question. It says very low number of HE trips coming onto the sites. How many outside contractors, farmers I presume, are bringing hay onto the site? I.e. people who don't have operating licence from this site. Sounds a bit complicated. Do you know that one Nicola? Or do we have to go to the agent?
It might be worth asking the agent if that's.
I'm sorry. Do you want me to repeat the question? Yeah, it's basically about the HGV licences. I noticed you have seven licences for people to operate from the site. Now, that's not the whole of the people who use the site because you'll have a number of contractors who'll bring hay onto the site, I assume. Or perhaps you don't, perhaps you could clarify that. or perhaps you don't, perhaps you could clarify that. So the question is, do these HGV licences, the seven that you hold, or at least the applicant holds, do they permit the use of a trailer? Which seems to be the issue that's creating the problem at the entrance.
Sorry, I don't know a great deal about the haulage business that operates from the yard away from the site or on the same property but off-site, not involved with that. My client is the only person, the agricultural person using that building for storage of hay, is not open to other agricultural contractors.
Yep, that bit I recognise. It's the question of, I mean, is the access point from Winchester Road is the crucial thing? If vehicles are too large to use that access point, even though the access point is acceptable to county highways from terms of sightlines, that particular point assumes that only vehicles of a certain size will be going through that entrance or exit. I presume, the photograph that you showed was of a farm vehicle pulling a trailer. Now...
councillor Pearson, I have allowed the question. It's unusual to go back to the agent. I have allowed the question in the interest of clarification.
Well, it's in the section of the report, Chair.
Yeah, but we don't normally ask questions of the agent. We only ask questions of the officer.
I don't mind who answers it, as long as we get an answer.
Right, do you have an answer for councillor Pearson, Mr Harris?
My understanding is that there is no restriction on the size of agricultural vehicle and/or trailers that can use that access from the Winchester Road.
Thank you. And Nicola, would you like to join in this conversation or Julie?
I think, Chairman, all I'd like to say is that all we can consider are the material planning considerations in this case. We've taken advice from the statutory highway authority. They've raised no objection on this use and that, you know, on the nature of this use to this site. So that's as far as we really can go in planning terms, I think, Chair, would be my advice to the committee.
Are you saying we have no control of the size of vehicles that use that entrance?
Chairman, I'd say that...
It's not if it's got an HGV licence.
That would be a matter for the highway authority, wouldn't it, or anyone else? It's not really a matter for this planning committee in decision-making in terms of this application.
Right, if we finish that topic, I have a question about the sort of penultimate paragraph under highways and parking on page 115, where it says, this application is unlikely to result in a significant increase in vehicle trips to and from the site. But we've already heard that the applicant is leasing land in Waltham Chase, which is, you know, the next settlement, so that's okay, but Titchfield, which is quite a long way away. So surely that represents an increase in the number of vehicles accessing the site?
Thank you. I can refer to the comments from the highways engineer in relation to the trips. And within his comments, the highway authority considers the traffic generation information contained within...
I've just turned mine off and then that's what happened. Anyway, sorry Nicola, sorry.
I should carry on. So I'll start that again. The highways authority considered the traffic generation information contained within the TN to be a reasonable description of the amount of traffic that would be expected to generate by the existing development. Is it acknowledged that the existing development has the potential to generate additional trips? And then further carries on to say that they do not consider there are any concerns with the onsite access arrangements, the use at the store and it would be unlikely to result in a material increase in traffic generation or capacity issues on the local highway network and therefore there's no objection.
Yeah, that's what I'm disputing. But it's us versus the highway authority, I think, here. Any further questions on, we were on the rest of the report? Oh councillor Westwood, so apologies, I have got you down. And then councillor Bentor again.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Just a question on the use of the storage facility, just for my own clarification. It's for use of storage for hay, straw, but we heard that there's a lot of agricultural vehicles and machinery in the store. Is both permitted? Is the planning permission for both or is it just for hay in this area?
It's agricultural land and it's an agricultural building within that land. We have suggested that we can put a condition on to tie that into agricultural use.
I think what I'd add though is that, you know, they're interchangeable. If they're bringing agricultural vehicles on anyway, if it's used for hay storage or vehicle storage, I don't think there would be an issue with that. The additional condition Nicola's recommending to you is that it's just retained for agricultural purposes so as it doesn't slip off into some other alternative or industrial use that probably isn't akin to the agricultural use of this land. So that's our recommendation to you in terms of that additional condition, Chair.
So vehicles are just as good as hay and straw?
Agricultural ones, yes, Chair.
councillor Bentor?
Thank you very much. Refer to the paragraph you referred to just now. The proposed agricultural store would allow hay to be stored undercover and given that the development is already used for the import, it's already used, it's actually contravening. We haven't given permission for these before, have we? Because their application was turned down. So to say it's already, must be using in an illegal way?
Chair, I think all I could say is that the land has, it's also allowed to be used for agricultural purposes, so that the provision of a building for storage, the use is already going on on that land, so it's a means of enclosure. We heard from the agent say that when they haven't got buildings, they store on the land anyway and cover it over. So I think you have to sort of consider an element of that in terms of your assessment. You know, this is a building for storage on use that already has an agricultural land that has an agricultural use. So I think, you know, maybe the two statements have got intertwined, but I think that in terms of decision-making, you have to have regard to the existing use of the site, which is for agriculture and they could legitimately store this stuff on there, albeit not in such a, a weather tight way, which you heard earlier and other risks.
Yep, my understanding or knowing the area, it wasn't used for producing hay or straw prior to this. It was a hulking piece of land, yes, but that was it. There was no hay or straw being produced on that land prior to these applications coming in.
Chairman, I think the point is that it could be without planning permission, so you have to have regard to the potential use of that land in decision-making.
Isn't appropriate to add an informative, should this be approved, that the applicant should give heed to site access and safety? Because those seem to be the issues that have been raised by the parish council and local members is that there have been accidents and it's not currently safe to access the site in the way it's been accessed. Is that appropriate to put an informative on?
Chairman, informative is just about, it's got no legal countenance, has it? So we could suggest anything to them about highway safety or making sure they pass on advice to contractors for vehicles that are being brought onto the land, but we have no forcability. So I think, you know, in terms of an informative, it's normally a direction or a notice and I just think, I'm not saying we can't, but, you know, you need to be careful what you're offering with a pass and this to get some advice as well.
Well, I'd be happy to recommend a condition, but I'm going to be told that I'm not allowed to do that anymore. Am I? Because we're not the highway authority.
Chairman, we have to have regard to the advice of the highway authority and they haven't raised an objection. So then you have to look at the tests and national guidance about when is it appropriate to add a condition? And there are five tests, six actually, that you go through in thought processes. And one is it has to be reasonably necessary and as the highway authority haven't requested it, I just don't believe in planning terms, it would be a reasonable condition, Chair. I don't know if you want to hear from Fiona Southern further, Chair.
On the point of the informative, I think it would be superfluous and frankly, the applicant's probably well aware of the highway conditions. So I'm not really sure what purpose it would serve, Chair.
councillor Reed?
Chairman, this all involves, in a sense, around this second paragraph of highways report. There is some major difference between the highway officer's report and that of local members. Have we not got a procedure where we can, I can't say challenge, but question the highways with regard to the information that they've already given us and the information we've received from a local ward member and members of the public? Because I would rather defer this and get that sorted than try and say, yes, we'll agree with it or disagree with the recommendation and it goes through or not. I'd like to see personally the highway department to see if what the information that's been interpreted by us is correct.
Chair, I think the highway authority couldn't be clearer and Julie's already set out quite clearly to you that we rely on their professional advice as this statutory authority. It's very difficult to see how we could, as laypeople and members, really take a different view. I think what councillor Reed almost suggesting is you defer this and get the highway authority here as we have done occasionally at cost and that's not something we do on most applications.
Whilst I agree with what you're saying, yes, I would like to see the highways here, but cost is an element that we can't bear nowadays. But the fact is, we've got two completely contrary stories. One from a highway officer and according to the parish council, who only looked back at previous notes and didn't actually go on-site. But I don't know what to do. To be quite honest, I don't think I can pass a judgment on this particular application at this point in time.
No, I tend to agree with you because the reality is, there is a problem which the highway authority hasn't recognised or doesn't think is significant and the parish council does think is significant. And I have, I live in a locality, so I've seen these large lorries myself. And so I'll be guided by members as to what you do, what you want to do. We can defer, we can ask the highways authority to reconsider and come to our next meeting. That isn't the advice I'm hearing from the officers, but it's our decision.
It's good, we're moving into a debate, which we're not appropriate at this stage. The accident rate, I agree with what parish council and councillor Bentor say, there is an accident situation on this road, but not at this particular point. The accident happening, actually in fact, went half mile farther down the road towards Sheddfield, which is the Upper Church Road junction, which is a dangerous junction and that's roughly there where the accidents are happening. This is a road, has a 30 mile an hour limit, but traffic rarely keeps those limits. It's a fast section of road, you know yourself, you're a local councillor as well. If this site doesn't produce the hay, because it's surrounded by woodland, it's simply, the application is simply for storage. Now, the debate is about whether the entrance is adequate in relation to traffic going in and out and in relation to perceived accident situation. But I think if we call in the fire service, because they're the ones who keep the accident records, you'll find that the accidents are actually not at that point, but further up the road. That may be an issue, I don't know. If that's important for the committee to hear, then by all means defer. But you know this road as well as I do.
Right, let's go forward with debate. Thank you councillor Pearson, that was useful. Oh councillor Bentor, is this debate or questions?
It's to partially support councillor Pearson, but to just correct him on one point. We wish it was a 30 mile an hour limit as it reached Upper Church Road and Church Road, but it is 40 mile an hour on that strip. And we would like it to be 30.
It is a long straight piece of road where people just be at. I've never seen a traffic monitor on it either. Debate? councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. This isn't an area that I know well, but I do know that it's an unduly fast road. What I'm concerned about here is that if we have no highways objection, we as a planning committee have no leg to stand on, I'm afraid. And if we didn't accept our officer recommendation on this point, the applicant would go straight to appeal and we'd probably have costs awarded against us because we would have made an unreasonable decision. Because the highways authority is who we go to and whether we like what they're saying or not, they are the authority and they are the people who tell us whether things are safe or not. And they are telling us that this access is adequate. Whether it is or not is a matter of one's experience and I don't have any personal experience, although I'm very concerned by the photographs that we've seen and what we've heard from the parish council. And also very concerned that this is not the first time that this applicant has put in a retrospective application and I don't suppose it'll be the last. But could I just put in a plea to both the applicant and to all his drivers that they should be very aware that this is potentially a dangerous junction and that they should take much greater care in their driving in and out of it? And if the applicant could also please remember that they do need to ask for planning permission for changing things and building new stuff. And, you know, once we go through this process properly, hopefully, we come out with a solution which is acceptable to all parties. But I do have concerns, but as I say, no highways objection, no leg to stand on, I'm afraid.
Thank you. Any further debate? councillor Pearson?
If I may, Chair, because I was giving information before rather than debating. I agree with what councillor Rutter said. The only grounds we have of turning down an application is if there are clear planning policies which gives us, if you like, a hook to hang a refusal on and there just isn't one on this site. The application is simply asking, albeit retrospective, for permission to have a building on this site for hay storage. And clearly hay is going onto the site, although presently the photographs we've seen, it's used for agricultural machinery rather than hay, but that may have been the time of year those photographs were taken when hay wasn't being produced in the area. So we've got to balance that in mind. There's certainly no hay produced around, immediate round this site because it's surrounded by woodland, you just have to look at the Google Maps, which unfortunately Nicola didn't have access to, to see that. The entrance, obvious from what I've said, I'm concerned about the width of that entrance. But again, the problem is a tree or another side of the entrance that have TPOs. That is, they're protected. And those trees will have been TPOed as a result of the parish council's request, I guess, maybe not. So it'd be difficult to widen the entrance. But again, we don't have a reason for taking, they must widen the entrance because Hampshire Highways is quite happy that entrance is adequate for vehicles going in and out. I personally would question that because of course the size of the vehicles. But that's not part of what Hampshire Highways is saying, unfortunately. So I don't, I personally, even though I'm worried about it, I don't see any grounds for us to say, no, I'm sorry, we can't have it. The building is there, but the entrance is being used with a great deal of difficulty. I regret, it is up to the applicant, the owners of this site, to control the size of the vehicles coming out of it because it's a dangerous entrance. That's as far as we can go, perhaps. That could be an infallible, but it couldn't be, we can't go any more than that.
Any further, any further complications, any further debate? There are several aspects of this application that I don't like. I don't like the fact that it's retrospective. I know there's nothing wrong in retrospective applications because it's at their own risk, but even so it assumes something. I don't like the fact that this is exactly the same application that was refused in September 19 because it was considered that it wasn't necessary and, well, the applicant now rents two other pieces of land. One piece of land is quite, at some quite distance from this site, so there's going to be the transport of the hay and straw all the way up from Titchfield. The direct route, of course, is up Titchfield Loop, it's very narrow. And I don't like the safety aspects that we've heard, but I do agree that the highways authority is the statutory consultancy, and to be quite honest, I think they've let us down here because I just don't think they viewed the site adequately, and I would have liked an informative put on. I actually quite liked councillor Rutter your suggestion that the applicant ensure that the drivers are aware of the safety aspects of entering the site, and I did see the applicant writing, so I hope he's taking that on board. So yes, I suppose I can't see a material planning reason to refuse it, but I'm very dissatisfied with the way that the whole application has been, has come about, as I've indicated. Any further contributions to debate? Councillor Bento?
Yeah, just to really emphasise exactly what you've said, I find this whole thing, if this had been bought before anything was built on the site and it wasn't being used because clearly it wasn't land for developing hay and straw, if it had been, come to the credit at that stage, we would turn it down because it's not a suitable place for the reasons you've made. It's far too far away from the places to store the hay coming from. It's retrospective that the owner of this site is good at retrospective applications, the same as happened with the haulage business, with their licensing there, and it's just, well, one step after another. Let's just get on with it and then we'll see if we can get it through something. I'm in next.
Councillor Westwood?
Yeah, I concur with everything that's said by my fellow councillors in terms of retrospective action. Just want to make the point again that this is for agricultural use, needs to be for agriculture use only.
I think that's it. So this application has been recommended for approval. The conditions are set out in the report and we have one extra one, that the barn should be used solely for agricultural purposes, which can mean the vehicles which are stored in it now or the hay and the storage, which is what the application says it's for. So all those who are voting to approve this application, please show.
Chair, that's seven in favour?
Sorry?
That's seven.
Thank you. And those against?
And one against.
And those abstaining?
And one abstention.
Thank you. So that application is approved. Thank you. We come now to item number 12, and I've declared a prejudicial interest in this, so I am removing myself from the meeting, as the vice chair is taking over. You moving here or?
We'll have a five minute break, so we will return here at three on the dot. By great, whatever it is, summertime. But what it says on your iPads, folks, okay?
Well, you know you were saying she, you.
Well, no, I wasn't.
What do you want? As soon as I turned it off, the home got worse. But what, two things happened when I turned my television off. In either home, or it then comes out of this speaker.
Yes, and that's what the child has done there. Because I think that's what's causing it. Because we never, in the old days.
No, we didn't.
I'm going to speak in essence.
Would you not mind sitting in the chairman's chair? So she'd bring in, we could hear it. No, you're too short. I would see you now. Just speak up.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry about that slight delay, we had a technical issue which needed sorting out. So welcome to item number 12 on our agendas, reference SDNP 2004774HOUS, which is Saddlestones, High Street, Soberton, South Wales National Park application. And the officer presenting is Hannah Harrison, so over to you Hannah, thank you.
Hello, can you hear? Thank you Chair. Today I present to you an application for Saddlestones and Soberton. The application is retrospective for two outbuildings, a shed and decking areas. Here we have the location plan. Now go through the site photos. So here we have the camera and the location at the bottom, just here on the map, just to give you an idea of where we're standing. The dwelling is just to the right in this photograph, and here is an approximate location of the existing outbuildings. Second photograph, a bit further down the side track along the side of the dwelling. This is the second entrance, and we have the garage building that was recently constructed and approved in 2019. Here you can see the top of one of the first outbuildings and the others are just set behind the trampoline here. Photos within the grounds, so we have the collection about this, so this is the shed and the smaller outbuilding, and the larger one just on the right here. The dwelling itself is just located here in this photograph, but that's a neighbouring property across the road on the high street. A bit further into the site now, kind of further into the agricultural side of the landscape, and here we have another shed, slight typo area here, that's not Butterfly Cottage, that's meant to be Hillside. This photograph's been taken from the public rights of way, just along the far left, where we have the larger building here and the collection buildings here, and this was the biggest pocket within the head row along that public rights of way that I could find to kind of get a decent view of the application site. And here we have the plans. So this is the second entrance I was speaking about just a moment ago, where you can come through here and go into the section of the land. First outbuilding, shed, second outbuilding and associated decking areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we now go on to public speaking. We have no objectors, we have one supporter, Linda Brown, the agent. Hello. And you will have three minutes, the clock will show on the screen, and if you'd like to start when you're ready. Thank you very much. Just switch on the microphone for that.
Right, okay, thank you. Can you hear me all right? Right, I would like to just explain why this application is retrospective as well as why you are hearing it as well. When the applicant purchased the property in 2017, there was a playhouse on site, and in the winter of 2017, they discussed with their proposals to replace it with a store and two outbuildings with their neighbours. The neighbours actually discussed whereabouts these buildings ought to be positioned, and they decided that one ought to be on the site of the original playhouse and the other one ought to be at 90 degrees, so neither of them looked at any of the neighbouring properties. And the applicant contacted the planning department to find out if planning permission was required, and they told that it wasn't, and unfortunately this is verbal, so they didn't have anything in writing. And there was some misunderstanding about the areas of the buildings in that the buildings are 10 square metres, but the permitted development site is, permitted development rights say that actually it's a total area of 10 square metres, so there is, there were some ambiguities there. And the planning department also wanted clarification, when this application was submitted, they had to go to their legal department to get clarification on the wording of the permitted development rights as well. The outbuildings were constructed in the spring of 2018, and whilst they were being constructed, one of their neighbours was using access through their site to construct their stable block. And since the buildings have been constructed, the applicant has entertained their neighbours in their garden, they've used the outbuildings for that purpose as well. And as Hannah's already said, in 2019, planning application was submitted and approved for an extension to the house and also for the construction of the garage, which is adjacent to one of these buildings. At no time were there any objections to the planning or any concerns ever raised by any of the neighbours or anybody like that. The reason why this application has come to being and also why you are hearing it at committee and not delegated powers is that the applicant was approached in August of last year, they received a visit from the enforcement officer who had received complaints about misuse of agricultural land. At his visit, the enforcement officer told the applicant that he couldn't see that there was anything that warranted these complaints. However, in September, the applicant received an email from the enforcement officer stating that the outbuildings did actually require permission and they would take legal action if nothing was done. So the neighbours actually then, when we put the application in, decided to then all put their objections into it.
Would you like to just finish your sentence?
If I may, the land, the main reason for objections is that they believe the land to be agricultural and it isn't. There's a tennis court that was approved in 1984, and that land that these buildings stand on is actually part of the residential curfewage.
Thank you very much, thank you. Members, do we have any questions for Mrs Brown? Yes, councillor Pearson?
Yes, councillor Pearson.
Yes, if I may. Is it? Is it Linda, is it?
Yes, it is, yes.
If I may, because I'm never quite sure if it's Mrs or Miss these days.
Whatever you like to call me, I get mystery as well, so don't worry.
Well, within reason. Yeah. A lot of gardens in the area, because it's in my ward this place,
Yes.
have been extended to include a field at the back. Has this happened in this case? Looking at the site plans that go with the photograph that Hannah has provided, there's an implication that there are two fields that now part of the garden.
There is some land at the back and the... I don't know if you can see, on the plan there is actually a vertical large rectangle to the west side. That's a tennis court.
Yes, I see that.
Yep, that was approved in 1984, big pardon. And when that was approved, that the land between it and what was the sort of garden beforehand was actually all included in the residential curtilage. But there is land outside of where these buildings are located that is not residential curtilage, it's regarded as paddock. I don't think it's... The applicant has actually looked at their deeds and there's nothing on their deeds that says it's agricultural. It's paddock, I believe, but not agricultural. And so that's where with the objectors, there's been some unfortunate misunderstanding to the use of the land. But that, they sit on residential and the enforcement officer also confirmed that. He sent a plan that confirmed the boundary, the residential boundary.
Yes, Linda, I think that is the crucial question. Is the original garden, looking at these site plans that Hannah has provided, the tennis court and two other buildings are not part of the original garden?
They were changed use when in 1984.
There was a change of use?
Yeah, I have that permission with me, with the plan, if you wanted to see some of it at all.
And there wasn't any condition stopping any development on that plan?
No. No, that was actually... No, nothing.
Well, that answers the crucial question and it obviously is garden. It's a question of can you put these buildings on the garden?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Thank you councillor Pearson. Any other questions, matters of clarification? No, thank you very much, Mrs Brown, thank you. Hannah, do you want to come back on any issues before we have general questions? No, I think Linda's actually covered the agricultural side and obviously explaining what's residential and what's agricultural. So nothing more to cover, thank you. Thank you. Members, this is not a very long report, so I'll take questions on any part of it. If you could just let me know what you're asking about, I will read. So, any questions from members, please? Councillor Pearson, thank you.
Yeah, if I might extend to Hannah. We're now talking about the building, or two outbuildings on a garden. Right, okay. One of which is, I think you referred it to as a play building? And the other one is what, a garden shed of some sort?
Yes, so we have, the large one of the three is kind of more of a garden storage.
Right, okay, yeah.
Ancillary.
Sort of a garden machinery thing.
Yes, multiple machinery, garden furniture can go in there. One of them is a lot smaller for general garden bits and pieces and one is very much a shed, so you can put your tools in it.
Okay, so just clarifying, because I'm a bit confused. Because I see a photograph of the play building, which is a picnic site viewing across the valley, which is a lovely view actually at that point. And, but you don't seem to have a picture of the other building. I know there's a ha-ha there where the additional land has been subsumed into what's not the garden but is the garden, if you don't... Sounds a bit obscure then. Okay, you clarify my mind. So we're talking about two traditional buildings, one of which is a playhouse and another one is a sort of small shed of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Right, okay.
Thank you councillor Pearson. Any other questions from members, please? No? Oh yes, councillor Reed, thank you.
On page 135, the last...
Could you use your microphone, please councillor Reed?
We had. On page 135, the final sentence, proposals should adopt a landscape-led design approach. Have any plans been drawn up? Or is this once again something that's going to be done, which we won't have access to?
Hannah?
So obviously, this is retrospective in regards to it being landscape-led. They have very much used materials that were naturally weathered into the landscape and they've certainly designed and constructed these buildings to be very shallow in height and certainly fit in with the local area. There's not much more they can do to the site, given what's already there and they have been there for several years.
Second point, Chair. When the site plan, the location plan, sorry, the red line is drawn around the whole of the property, does that indicate that at any time in the future the whole of that land is adoptable for development?
Not necessarily. Because one half is a paddock and one half is very much residential. So if the applicant did want to obviously construct anything further within the paddock area, they would need planning permission to put back.
Sorry Chair, I was just wondering why the plan wasn't drawn up in a slightly different way as a red line with a blue line to show other parts of the land. Yeah, okay. If it's not going to be deemed as developable land in the future as well?
I get the impression that that is the case, it's not now. Okay, any more questions? No? Debate, please. Councillor Pearson.
To me, confusion has arisen.
Mike, please.
Confusion has arisen simply because the garden has been extended without the neighbours perhaps, or present neighbours, realising which bit of it has been extended. It's typical of a garden has been extended to subsume part of a field. Now, when that happens, we know from past experience, you cannot develop that bit of the garden that has now become. You can only do any development on the existing bit of the proper garden, which is agreed in 2018. That's correct of Hannah. So in my mind, I mean, I don't see any problem with this. I mean, the buildings have been there some time. Playhouse was there, built on the garden with permission, closer to the house itself from the tennis court. I'm not quite sure where the extension to the house comes in, because these buildings are quite separate from the house. And I'm normally used to talking about extensions that are actually attached to the main building, which is not the case. So, you know, unless somebody comes up with a reason why these buildings are considered to be extension of the house, I'd see no reason to turn this application down.
Thank you councillor Pearson. Any other debate? And I have a question because the parish council asked if we could remove permitted development rights, but I don't believe that that's possible in this case. Could you just comment on that, please? And Mrs Spinnick?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I think because this is residential curtilage and it's already been, there's already been an application to establish that we can't now remove permitted development rights at this time. And what I think I would say is, given the distance from the house and as the speaker said, you know, the permitted development rights are only allowed for 10 square metres. So I think there's some other controls there in the general permitted development order anyway. And you know, that would be my reply. We couldn't really do it, but I think there's some control there anyway, Chair.
Yes, and I think after this experience, the applicants are probably very well aware of what is now and isn't permitted development. So if they were preparing to do anything else, they would have to come with planning permission. Okay, thank you very much. So we have this application before us. It is recommended for approval. And there are no changes to the conditions. So, which are on page... Where are the conditions? Informative's on page 137. And that's about it really. So could I see all those members in favour of the officer recommendation to approve?
Aside members, Chair?
That's all eight members, thank you very much. Perhaps we could invite councillor Evans back into the meeting now, thank you. And this one to carry on?
Yes.
In fact, I think we're having a 10-minute break now, comfort break. So if members could return just after half past three, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Right, so we come to the final item on the agenda. Item thirteen, land and track north of the Limmers, Winchester Road, Durlie. This is the land and track north of the Limmers. The case officer is Charlotte Fleming. And when you're ready, Charlotte, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, can I just interrupt? Chair, were you not going to declare personal interest in this item, did you say?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I do need to declare, thank you Fiona, I do need to declare a personal interest, not prejudicial, in that I do know the parish council representative, Councilor Josie Wood. And we didn't know until yesterday who that was going to be, but it's a personal interest.
Chair, I could declare the same personal interest, I also know.
So you're declaring, and Councilor Bentoe.
I know the Chormaker as well.
You know lots of people, Councilor Wood. Charlotte, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Afternoon, committee. I'll get there, it's gonna change screen. Yep. This application is for the erection of an additional commercial storage building of B8 use and landscaping works. The site is between Bishopswaltham and Uppham, just off the B2177. Historically, it was part of Stakes Farm as a grain store, and the site is operated as a commercial storage unit for over ten years. The surrounding site is a mix of commercial and agriculture. The new agricultural building is just above the King's George Farm as an access track. That's under separate ownership and it's just been built, so some of my photos have it in, some of them don't, because I've been several times, every time, regularly. So technically, the site is a greenfield site, there's nothing that's been built on it, but due to its association with the existing commercial use on the site, it has been heavily compacted and used as storage and external parking to further own commercial storage, indicating a clear ownership boundary, as you can see on the aerials. There is also a private light aircraft field towards Uppham, so just off the map, to the west, where the land rises up. You can see here, the yellow lines are public footpaths. The blue arrow is the access point, Stakes Lane is along going up, and the main Winchester Road to Bishopswaltham is this way. You've got nothing on the site, it's just sort of heavily compacted soil. And you can see in some of the photos, existing storage and on the site of cars and rubble and things. So that's the site. They own, this is a rough red line, they own the commercial unit next door, and they've also got a track that goes along in front of the hedge row with the footpath behind the hedge row. This is the existing site, so you've got, the top right photo is where the pile of rubble is, is where the barns go. You can sort of see a later photo of it below with the King George barn behind, which is separate application completely, not in their ownership. The bottom left is the accident in the site, you can see where the barns will be extended or duplicated further along from the existing. You can also see the condition of the ground and how it's all been used for like storage of cars and gravel and a small hut over there. So, the existing sites, I've carried out three site visits throughout the planning history. So originally, pre-app stage, it was just sort of extending commercial storage, and we were happy with that. An application came in early 2020, which was for shipping containers externally and self-home office or self-work containers. And we refused, well, we were going to refuse it, but it got withdrawn, and then we reevaluated it, the applicant, agent, myself, and the landscape officer in great detail. We recommended that it got put in an agricultural-style building, the storage units. So it reads as an agricultural building, but actually is commercial storage. So, the existing site, sort of the box in the blue at the top, has three commercial units in, approximately 2,700 square metres, and the proposed is about the same, sort of 2,700 square metres, plus landscaping along with the edge, which is already there, a bund, but they're going to enhance it further, and landscaping to the south, which you'll see on the site plan in a minute. This is the access off Stakes Lane, so the bottom left picture is the Limmers' storage, and the gate you can see in the background is zoomed in on the top picture. That's Stakes Lane to the bottom right. Highroads have no concerns, and the agent has also confirmed that no issues currently access their site, so the two barns you can see. These are some long views into the site. So, this one is from the very top of the field, or the very top of the footpath before it goes past the hedge row. You can see the farm, the agricultural building or storage unit existing is over here. The second one is just where the track turns down to Winchester Road. So I think I'm on the track, rather than the public footpath side. And the third photo is looking through the hedge row. I think this was taken in November time last year, in the rain, through the hedge rows. There's not many trees, but sort of the track is privately owned, I'm on the footpath side for a break in the hedge row, but it's only a small break. This is up from Cross Lane, so you can see number one, Brown Field, this is the agricultural field, not in their ownership of the application site. So this is taken not in a public footpath, but just looking down the field, you can see the lie of the land. The barn is here, the existing barn, it's coming out this way, just slightly. Photo two is up from Cross Lane, approximately this location, so there's hedge row to begin with, as you can see on the map. And then further down, there's no hedge row, so no edge to the road, which is photo three. So you can sort of see it in the distance, but it reads as an agricultural barn. So this is the block plan of the site, so that's the former chicken shed, this is not in their ownership. This is in their ownership existing, and this is proposed, along with the landscaping here. So it's not very clear on this plan, but there's an existing bund along here with hedge row on top. They're proposing additional plant on top of the hedge row and landscaping and tree belt section here, which is going to be conditioned, subject to landscapes, well, landscape suggestions should be conditioned, the details, and that's condition five in my report, to ensure that it integrates into the landscape and meets the applicant's requirements still. And no concerns to be raised by the National Park Rangers over the landscape setting of it either. This is the floor plan and elevations, so it's all profile plating to match the neighbouring barn. It's set twenty centimetres lower than the existing barn, and then there's a bund on the right-hand side, you can see, which helps screen it, instead of, I'm looking straight onto it from the south, so there'll be landscaping in the way, blocking it from the south. I think that one. This concludes my presentation for additional commercial storage buildings and landscaping. My officer's recommendation is to approve, subject to conditions set out in my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move now to the public speaking. And Mrs Cleaver, you are speaking as an objector, and you are first on. So if you'd like to put your microphone on, press the button and the red light will come on, great. And then when you're ready, you'll have three minutes and you'll see the countdown on the screen. But in any case, I shall remind you at the end of your training. So when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for this opportunity to raise residents' concerns. Overall, the proposals are considered to be an unsustainable form of development, given the site's location away from the built-up area and within the national park. The scale and nature of the new B8 use is seen as a disproportionate expansion of the existing premises to the detriment of the surrounding secluded landscape character. Likely traffic movements generated will further damage the character of the quiet rural lanes and erode verges, as vehicles have to reverse long distances to allow others to pass. Additional vehicle movements from the proposed use are considered inappropriate. Stakes Lane has road signage as being unsuitable for HGVs. Specific points: the junction between Stakes Lane and Winchester Road already has verges overrun by vehicles due to its narrow nature and inadequate visibility displays. This has not been adequately looked at by the highway authority, given that this is a new reuse being proposed. It is a greenfield site, and there is no established fallback position. There is no evidence to suggest that this junction is suitable for an increase in vehicle traffic. The new built-form warehouse, given its exposed location, will be visible in wide views from the network of puppet rights-of-way to the south, east, north and west. Additional activity on the site will impact on the surrounding area's relative tranquility and the special qualities of the national park. The archaeological potential of the site is unknown and should not be ignored, given the former Roman villa on the boundary of the site. Any expansion of hard-standing areas should be controlled, and areas to the south of that outline in red should be reduced, because they're likely to be used for the parking of large commercial vehicles. The increase in commercial premises is likely to lead to more security measures, such as lighting, with a detrimental impact on dark night skies and visual amenity. External lighting and sky glow travel across the open valley aspect and can cause a nuisance to residential properties to the north. The proposed planting should have been carried out as part of the previous grain store extension. It focuses mainly on the southern boundary. This is not considered sufficient to mitigate landscape harm arising, nor to bring sufficient ecological benefits. The specified hours of use are unneighbourly and should be restricted. Finally, it is our opinion that the principles of development have not been satisfied. This activity does not need a rural location, nor is there evidence that additional B8 premises would be economically beneficial here as set out in the South Downs local plan evidence base. This proposal does not support farm diversification, nor reuse of an underutilized building, nor does it seek to enhance the wider landscape setting in line with the requirements of NPPF. Therefore, local residents wish the application to be refused, as there are more suitable sites for storage and distribution use elsewhere in less sensitive locations.
Thank you, Mrs Cleaver. There could be some questions from members of the committee clarification. Are there any questions for Mrs Cleaver? No, so that's your bit done. Now we have the parish council representative, Councilor Wood. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Is that clear? Josie Feenwood, representing Bishopswaltham Parish Council. Bishopswaltham Parish Council object to the erection of a commercial storage building for B8 land use on the land and track north of the Limmers Winchester Road. This site has two large buildings on it that were formerly for grain storage. Permission was given to change the use to general storage in 2006, and then in 2010, the South Downs National Park was established, and this land is within the national park. As we know, the purposes of the South Downs National Park are to enhance the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage of the area, and to promote opportunities for the understanding and enjoyment of the special qualities of the national park by the public. This planning application does neither of these. The special qualities of the South Downs National Park are clear in the policies and do not include commercial storage. We did not object to a change of use of the agricultural barns in 2019, as the buildings were already there. However, the addition of a new building that is not related in any way to the core purposes of the national park of farming, forestry and tourism is contrary to South Downs' planning policies. Storage barns necessitate the movement of goods to and from the site. This site is located in Stakes Lane, with additional possible access along Roman Road, which are both narrow, single-lane country lanes. Both of these lanes have signs stating they are suitable for HGVs. The B2177 is at national speed limit sixty miles per hour and does not have good visibility. The site is a greenfield site, not Brown Field, and has a much-used footpath, footpath thirty-nine, passing the site. We believe the erection of this large commercial barn will damage the fringes of the South Downs National Park due to overdevelopment of the site and difficulties of access, and is contrary to SD34 as it has no link to farming, forestry or tourism.
Thank you very much. And there might be some questions for you. Any clarifications for the parish council representative? No, thank you very much, Councilor Wood. And finally, we have the agent, Mr Michael Papps, and the applicant, Mr George Rees, who are speaking in support of the application. Are you both speaking?
I'll be speaking.
Okay, and you are Mr Rees?
No, Mr Papps.
Right, sorry. And then if Mr Rees wants to answer any of the questions, if there are any afterwards, then he's welcome to do so. So when you're ready, Mr Papps, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The current planning application follows the withdrawal of submission to locate 160 storage containers and self-service office space externally. Although this application would have received the officer's support with some amendments, due to the local level of objection and the landscaping comments, this application was withdrawn. There was little objection locally at this time to the grass of the highways. It was agreed with the planning officer and the landscape officer that a more sympathetic development that would meet the needs of the applicant would be to erect a building similar to that already on-site, used for commercial purposes. Following a series of further revisions and the introduction of additional planting, the planning officer confirmed that the current scheme would be supported under the submission of the new application. Following the submission of the new application, there are a number of local objections which relate to the following three key points: landscape, development in the countryside, highways and traffic. The landscape officer pointed out the key views when we originally... The landscape officer pointed out the key views when we originally held our meeting on site. It was agreed with the landscape officer additional planting would ensure the proposed building could integrate into the existing built form and the open countryside. With this mitigation now included within the current planning application, it should be noted that the landscape officer supports the application. The local residents have highlighted their concerns regarding the commercial use on the site and the gap between the barns and Ashton and the west of Bishopswaltham. Firstly, any further future planning applications be controlled by the South Downs National Park. And secondly, this land is not within the applicant's ownership. Concerns have been raised regarding the existing access onto Stakes Lane with the main objection being the access from Stakes Lane not being suitable for large HGV vehicles. The key points to the concerns from the local residents are as follows. The existing B8 storage business on site are served by only vans and cars with no heavy goods vehicles entering the site. We've held meetings with the local councillors who sit on the highways committee. They have no issue with the application. They have commented the poor state of the road is something as a committee they need to address. Historically, this site was used for a 6,000 tonne grain store where the traffic movements of large vehicles and courtship vehicles and heavy goods vehicles had a far greater impact than the proposed scheme and the existing commercial buildings. There have been no register complaints on the traffic using the site. It should also be noted that our highways consultant can see no issue with the proposal and the Hampshire County Council have raised no objections for both applications submitted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So are there any questions for either Mr Papps or Mr Rees? Councillor Rutter, then... Councillor Edwards, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask about this HGVs issue. And I take the point that when it was a grain store, there were a lot bigger vehicles accessing this site. Are you saying that the current use of the existing building is cars and vans and that you're not anticipating any change in that? Or are you saying that there will be HGVs access in the new building? Sorry, I didn't quite understand what you're saying there.
Yeah, sorry. As it stands at the moment, the existing buildings have no HGVs and there is no proposal in the future for any HGVs to enter the site at all. It will only be small vans and cars.
Thank you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you. The first of my questions is, I think, similar to councillor Rutter's but perhaps slightly different. Do I understand by the phrase commercial storage building, the kind of operation where individual people might store the contents of their garage for a few months? Or is it something more geared at commercial clients?
Under the use class, yes, it can be either. It could be self-storage, as you rightly pointed out, or potentially there could be one client who would take the whole building. B8 generates very small amounts of traffic movements, just sheerly for the fact that it is storage, accessing those products and then removing them. Under our consultant's review and looking at other similar B8 storage in the area, there are very few traffic movements at all entering and leaving the site.
Thank you. If I may, Chair, just one further clarification. There's reference in 2006 to the establishment of a microbrewery. And one of the objectors has referred to the recent closure of the brewery up the lane. My question is just whether the operation of this brewery has any relevance to the application made now?
If I may, no, it doesn't. It's owned by...
You don't, you just need to press the button once and it should work. Right?
There you go, sorry. Different ownership altogether. We used to own it 15 years ago, but not since then, so totally different owners.
You're not storing beer?
And I wish we were.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask about the operating hours? So 7am to 9pm, seven days a week? Seems rather a lot.
Yes, I mean, we've looked at this as a business model, but actually that is flexible from our point of view and we would anticipate it being controlled under condition. And probably something if we were looking at more flexible hours would be maybe sort of 7 in the morning till 7 at night or something like that. And we could reduce those hours and still achieve our goal.
Flexible means that you're prepared to reduce it and you were suggesting 7 till 7. Is it still 24 hours? Is it still, you know, every day?
I think that's up for discussion. I mean, ideally, that would be the perfect solution for us. But actually, we could do, for example, Monday to Friday and then maybe Saturday mornings or something like that to reduce the impact on the local residents if it was deemed to be necessary.
I think from the committee's point of view, it needs to be defined today rather than leaving it as it currently is. It's in a condition, condition seven, it's 14 hours a day permanently. I think it does leave that, but we'll come back to the conditions perhaps. Could I ask about employment opportunities? Would you be employing staff on this site?
So we won't personally be employing anyone, but when we first went in, it was going to be for self-storage. So that wouldn't be, it would probably be one of the tenants that we've already got on site. It was a diversification project for them. So it's more of a case of them being able to keep their business going by diversification and sort of an add-on to their business, as it were. But we anticipate hopefully being able to do self-storage there and have other sort of bigger storage tenants there, so they would produce their own employment, as it were. But they wouldn't be employed by us.
Yeah. What I'm trying to establish is the contribution to the local economy.
Well... Yeah, I mean, the anticipation is that the square footage would generate employment, not at a large scale because obviously only B8 storage requires a small amount of employment. We do anticipate that there would be two or three employees roughly approximately, based on the other rentals we have on the site. And if another business, which there has been indications, would like to expand into this one, they would then increase their employment numbers following the granting permission.
So would you, just hearing what you just told me, would you be having ideas of expanding?
No, no, not expanding further. I mean, as in the existing businesses that currently rent on the site, the buildings, they would like to, they've indicated to us they might like to expand into the new building if it is granted consent and that would allow them to employ further people.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of clarification? Councillor Benton?
Very much. I can't understand the need for this sort of business in this area. Have you done some survey or established that you might get more business?
Well, yes, in the fact that actually we are approached for these type of businesses. ECM, who I work for as a company, there is a great demand at the moment for B8 storage, especially rural buildings of that nature. The applicant has been, obviously, let out the other buildings quite easily with more people approaching for this type of building. So I think our experience has sort of pointed us that actually the expansion of this is going to be taken up quite quickly.
Thank you. Anything other questions? No, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming along today. Hannah, anything you want to add to what you've heard? No, thank you. So we'll turn then members to principle of development on page 156. I did notify Hannah of a question that I had. I did ask Mrs Pinnott the same question. We know that the NPPF is in favour of conditions in which businesses can invest, expand, adapt. But the South Downs local plan also has policies that foster the economic, I'm thinking of SD34, and social wellbeing of local communities. I was just wondering how this proposal fits in with SD34.
So SD34, I've got it covered on page 156. So it provides flexibility for established businesses, which is what's on the site, and also secures future resilience, protects local jobs. And yeah.
Have we just heard that there wouldn't be many...
Well, there are additional jobs and it's also securing the existing business. So if they couldn't expand, it's likely that they wouldn't stay in that location. That clears it up, Chair.
And then SD1, it has to be a necessary use for the site in the countryside? Does this have to be there?
As I said earlier, the site sort of is officially greenfield, but it reads more as like a grey field or brownfield because it's sort of been so compacted and uses external commercial storage and car parking and it's been dug up a lot. So if you look on the photo in the presentation, it sort of reads very much as its own site rather than agricultural field.
Thank you. Any further questions on principle of development? So we move on then to design, scale and impact on the character of the area.
This please, Chair.
Councillor Rees?
On the last sentence there, we're reminded of the internal dark sky reserve. It's in the report, it says there is one low level external light above the shutter doors, which makes certain sense. But when you look at the hours of operation and these are to run throughout the whole year, are there any proposals to put internal lights into these structures? And if so, how are they going to be protected against the night skies?
So there aren't any windows on the building and I have a condition on about any further external lighting needs plant permission. And exists the one light that's proposed outside is on a tiny light.
That I read, but are there any internal?
I don't know. It's inside the building and there's no windows on the building, so I wouldn't have thought to go outside, but I can get clarification on that?
I was only thinking on the shutter doors are open, you're going to have a huge amount of light letting out, if that's the case. Thank you.
Any further questions on the design? Councillor Benton, then Councillor Pearson.
Well, I'm talking about the impact on the area, talking about vehicle movement. Now, we're told that there aren't going to be any heavy goods vehicles, but I'm not sure that we can judge that to be whatever moves into these places, what sort of vehicles they might be using. So can we limit the size of vehicles in any way? Or you've got some restrictions up because this is one of the main objections for the local people, the movement of heavy goods vehicles along what are very narrow roads. Those roads are really car width. Yes, you can go along there with a larger vehicle, but it's, as somebody said, I think, it's very difficult reversing along there.
So the highways support that's been submitted is acceptable and the highways officer said it's not acceptable. Also, what was it, just sort of control on the vehicle coming to the site. I don't think we can put that on a condition because it's a B8 use, which is very broad. The agent and applicant have said there's currently no HGVs on the site. It might be something worth speaking to them or asking them if they can put it in their contract when they rent it out to, because I believe it might be up for something like that. But that's not really a planning condition so much.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. May I ask if there's been any input, comments, either objecting or otherwise, from Solent Flight, which is the private airfield which is within half mile of this site? I wouldn't expect there would be, but I'm just inquiring to make sure that we are aware that there is that small light airfield there.
No, I haven't received any comments directly. I am aware of the airfield, but the existing building is lower than the, no, the proposed building is lower than the existing building and further away.
And it's behind trees anyway. Just wanted to make sure that we could...
So shall we move on then? Shall we move on then to impact on neighbours? We have touched on highways, but there might be a few more questions on highways. I have one. In that, this is a bit deja vu for this committee, but the highways officer says that there would be less traffic, which might be the case, but it would be larger traffic. And I wonder whether the highways officer has taken that into account?
I believe they have. It's sort of got the highways approach and they've sent in comments, saying it's less traffic. I think, I believe they've said that based on the previous application, it was withdrawn. So it's less number of vehicles compared to that and they were happy with the previous.
What I'm finding difficult, and I don't suspect you've got the answer, but what I'm finding difficult is that these two buildings, or one building, weren't there before and that will attract extra traffic and extra large traffic. So how can there be less traffic? But you're going to go back to the highways officer, aren't you?
Yeah, sorry.
It's not your call, it's the way it is, but it is a bit deja vu for us here on this committee. Right, any other questions on these issues? Or we can open it up to the end of the report. Ecology and biodiversity.
Question on conditions?
Sorry, Chair, I have no question on conditions. Can we take that now? Conditions? Okay.
About biodiversity measure. I noticed you referred to a bund along one side. Might I ask if it's going to be landscaping on that bund to provide additional screening? I know, I'm not expecting the trees to grow up to the height of the building, but...
Yes, there is a condition. So condition five is a detailed planning proposal, landscaping proposal. So that covers that.
And there's proper landscaping to the south of the site as well.
So that's all sort of subject to this condition. So if you discuss...
Which also helps to hide the buildings.
Yes.
Did you want to speak?
Thank you, Chair. My question was on the conditions, specifically condition seven, which we briefly touched on. Now, I think, I was going to ask, is it reasonable to reduce the hours of use? And I think my concern about the night sky impact of this huge roller door opening up and the light spilling out from within the storage facility would argue that, yes, we should be allowed to ask if the hours of use should be reduced. I think that the applicant has offered 7 till 7. I'd be happier with 7 till 6, but because at night, you know, it's pitch black from sort of half past four, or but in the winter, I mean, it's pitch black from sort of half past four. But I'll be happy to listen to our officers' recommendations. But I think at the very minimum, it should be 7 till 7 and perhaps excluding Sundays and bank holidays for the amenity of local residents. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we heard from the applicant's agent, they'd be willing to go 7 till 7. I think that would be reasonable. I think six o'clock is probably a little bit early, particularly in the summer months, isn't it? And I think we can differentiate between the times of the year. So I'd be comfortable with 7 in the morning till 7 at night. And perhaps that would be Monday to Saturday and then no time on Sundays or public holidays, I think was the suggestion. I mean, that doesn't prevent, and the applicants indicated they'd be happy with that for now, it doesn't prevent them coming back, showing how this business operates and why they need later hours or alternative hours if the business model needs that. So it would give an opportunity to start with this and test that and see how that works for the business and the darkness skies and the local residents.
Any comments on 7 till 7, subject to the agent agreeing to these 7 till 7, Monday to Saturday and not at all on Sunday and bank holidays? Could you put your microphone on?
Sorry, vehicle lights coming up and down there.
Sorry, vehicle lights coming up and down there in the early morning and in the evening will quite clearly negate any floodlighting. I wonder how much business actually would be coming on site actually that early or that late, but I don’t think, I’m quite happy that Mrs Finnick negotiates with the agent or Mr Rees. I’ve got to say at this point, I have a feeling that I actually know your town. Is he called David?
Please don’t talk to members of the public.
Well, it is.
But I will do so.
It’s mainly personal interest, Chairman.
I will do so from the chair.
Chair, may I propose formally that we change the hours of use to 7 to 7, excluding Sundays and public holidays, rather than leave it to negotiation, because I want to be confident that that is what we’ve agreed at this point.
But I am starting to ask, Mr Pupps, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. So could the committee vote on whether they accept 7 till 7, Monday to Saturday and not at all on Sunday or bank holiday?
Agreed.
Can you say public holiday, Chair?
Oh, public holiday.
For any future ones.
Agreed.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Thank you. Okay, so were there any further questions? I had a question about drainage because the ranger did flag up from the South Downs National Park and when I went out, the road, forgotten the name of the lane, was very wet. So is there a condition on that?
There isn’t currently a condition on drainage. I covered it briefly in my reports, saying the ground’s quite compacted in my report, but the applicant is going to use surface water drainage systems along soakways and permeable surfaces, but they are happy to put a condition on about drainage.
But what, sorry?
The applicant’s happy to put a condition on about drainage, so I have one to add, if you want me to put a...
Could we put a position on drainage?
Chairman, I think we could condition that the details are undertaken in accordance with what Charlotte’s just set out, just for sort of control through this committee and I think that would be suitable, wouldn’t it? So rather than getting the details, we would certainly be undertaking...
Yeah, no, not proposing that.
With those details, Chair.
Is that acceptable to the committee that we let Charlotte sort out the drainage issue?
Agreed.
Right, so I think we’ve got to debate. Councillor Pearson?
Go on, microphone, Councillor Pearson.
George, is your father called David?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I used to play hockey with him more than 50 years ago, I don’t know if it’s relevant, but his first...
No, it’s not relevant, no.
Right, okay. Well, having said that, clear that, killing myself. I don’t know George. I think he was Neat or Crash Opera at that time. Anyway... Yeah, I’ve looked at this, I know this site, not the actual site, but I’m aware of where it is and actually there are a couple of ponds, or used to be a couple of ponds, just to the south of where these buildings are that we’re talking about. To me, I like the idea that these buildings are green or whatever the colour is called these days, because that merges into the colour of the vegetation around it. The, one of the members of the public raised objection about it being able to be seen. We’ve come across this situation many times before and the planning inspectors’ comment about this is it would be seen with a background of trees. Because it’s green, it would not stand out. So in previous applications or other applications, it’s not been grounds for turning it down. I like the additional landscaping there. I like the idea that there’s possible, archaeology is mentioned here, which is a plus point. Like many people, I’m concerned about the width of Stakes Lane. It is a very, very narrow lane. I just get builders’ vans down there, I think be pushing, as you know, Chair, if you’ve been down there. But it’s not a very well-used lane and I suspect if this building is going to be used for storage, there’s not going to be amount of traffic, because I imagine storage would be talking about six months a year, two years or whatever. Well, that doesn’t suggest a constant flow of vehicles once the sites are, spaces are booked within those buildings. And one’s got to bear that in mind when I’m coming to a decision about this. I don’t see that it makes any impact on the area over and above any other light industries that are in the immediate vicinity of it. I mean, there’s, there are one or two other buildings, some of which I know personally again, or one of which I know personally again, because I used to play pockey with them as well. He doesn’t live, but he’s got a site opposite there by Solent Motor Arms, fills something around. But I’m inclined to favour this application with the reason I’ve said. It makes very little impact on the South Downs National Park, as the ranger has said. I like the biodiversity inputs of actual vegetation because that will attract wildlife as well and if those bushes of some of them actually are floral, that will be good for insect life as well. It is, the definition mentioned of greenfield sites, as the planning committee knows, greenfield site implies it’s been used for pasture, animal land or something like that. This clearly hasn’t and one of those photographs showed quite clearly, it’s dead ground. And that sense, because it was used, I presume, for vehicle movement, it becomes a brownfield site rather than a greenfield site within the area and I think we’ve got to allow for that as well. So unless somebody comes up with something screaming, and it hasn’t occurred to me and Hannah, good excellent report, has not mentioned, I can’t turn your ground to turning it down.
Thank you. I will go next, because I can’t see any more hands. I will not be voting for this application for reasons of the South Downs Local Plan. I don’t think it meets SD 25. We looked at the picture of it and it was countryside and to me, this is an incongruous built-up building in the countryside, which adds nothing to the countryside, nothing to the landscape and is in fact quite ugly. And I understand why the other two buildings are there because they came before the National Park was there and then they’ve been re-designated, but that is absolutely no reason to add on two more buildings and perhaps more. Now, I do understand that the applicants have tried their best to fit it in with the surroundings, but there is no landscaping around it. The bun is opposite, so I don’t think it fits in with SD 25. I don’t think it fits in with SD 34, which says it should foster the economic and social wellbeing of communities, is adding nothing to the communities. We’ve had objections from two parish councils, Otham and Bishop’s Waltham, because they obviously feel very strongly about it. And similarly, I think it doesn’t make a positive contribution, SD 5, doesn’t make a positive contribution to the appearance and character of the area. The area is countryside, not more storage buildings. And I haven’t got a leg to stand on, I know, over the access, but that lane is so narrow and it, well, you just wouldn’t be able to, I don’t think it’s fit for purpose, but you can’t argue with the highways authority, it seems, so I won’t list such as a reason. But I think it is indicative that it is a countryside location because it’s served by a countryside lane. So those are my views on it. Any more? Any more contributions to debate? So this application has been recommended for approval with the changing of the hours of operation, which I think is condition seven, to 7 till 7, Monday to Saturday and not at all on Sundays or public holidays. And also an extra condition, details to be sourced out with the case officer over drainage of the site. All those in favour of approving this application, please show.
Five, Chair.
And those against?
Four against, Chair.
So that application is approved. That concludes our business items for the day. Thank you very much and...